Are we ready? The meeting, public hearing of City of Falls Church Planning Commission is now in session. Ms. G., would you please call the roll?
President.
Here.
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 Here. Here. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Would you? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. I am going to suggest that since we do not, we have not had the appointment of new or reappointed commissioners, that we hold off on the election of officers possibly for a period of not longer than 45 days, which would give us, give the nominating committee three weeks to get their act together and make a decision. And then we can have our nominee, our election of officers and appointments to the Planning Commission, city boards and commissions. So the makeup of the Planning Commission would stay the same until we got our, our appointments. Is that, is that okay with the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Widdes?
While in theory it is fine with me, I just curious, have we gotten any legal sort of advice or opinion whether that's acceptable under the Virginia law? I'm not sure it's a legal, it's a local issue. I thought it was more of a Virginia issue.
I'm, I'm not sure if, we don't have an opinion. I know we've done it before.
You simply continue unless and until replacement is...
Right. You can serve at the, serve until replacement is done. I know that in the past they've had this happen a couple of times.
Well, serving as a replacement to me is a different issue than postponing the, or continuing the election of officers and whether that's allowed. And, and my concern is that this is the kind of action where I would be, I would be concerned that any action we take over that 45 day period or whatever period we establish would then be put to question, could be questioned as being legal action if we have a board that's not representative properly and not under the correct leadership. So I, I'm concerned about the legal issues, not about the makeup of the people on this, on this board for sure, on the commission. And I do want to say, if I might, that I think this is really unconscionable, really, that we do not have this clarity for the Planning Commission. This, this is a, an essential board of this government and it is shameful, really, that members of this city and the people on this commission would not know their fate after the hard work that I have witnessed on the time that I've served with them, that to, the time that the people who are awaiting their new appointment or their, their reappointment would not know in the first week of, after their appointment has expired, to me is, is really unacceptable. I don't think it, it takes into consideration their feelings and, and is a way to recognize, really, the hard work that, that all of us, but, but those people in particular have put in. And, and I think as a City of Falls Church, we can do better than that in an era where there is a constant, a count of, people asking for accountability, that the city council wouldn't be accountable to a board like this and to the members who put in all that time and effort so that they don't know whether they are continuing their service to the city, I find very upsetting and puts us in an awkward position, or puts me in an awkward position, where I need to ask for legal opinions about whether or not our actions over the next 45 days will even be acceptable. I hope the city council does everything in their power to rectify this as soon as possible, not only for our board's sake, but for the people who are in question here. So I'm very disappointed that we're in this position.
I, I certainly unders, I certainly understand your concerns. I don't think we have a lot of things on the agenda coming up that we would have to rule on, but that's beside the point. Your points are well taken and I could certainly recommend that we just put it aside for two, till our next meeting, if, if that would be, you know, the 45, it's not the, I, I understand it's probably not the 45 days. It's, it's just that it's not being taken care of.
It's not being taken care of and I don't want, I don't want the actions of this board to be, this commission to be questioned because of the position that we've been put in by the city council.
I understand.
But I do not have a problem due to the, the people who are in our current leadership have done a wonderful job and I would support them certainly for the next 45 days, if not longer. I just want to make sure that we are not breaking any state codes as opposed to just local ones.
Well, I'll tell you what. Why don't we just agree to go ahead until we hear from the city coun, the city council nominating committee as to how they're doing it. In the meantime, I will check with the, the city attorney and make certain that we're in good standing.
Okay. Let me agree.
Is that okay with rest of the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. We have consensus? All right. We'll move ahead then with our agenda. We'll move on to receipt of petitions. There seems to be no one in the audience who wishes to make a petition. I don't know why. And we have no old business or, we have no old business on our agenda. We'll move on to new business, which is approval of our 2014 annual report to city council. Have, have you all had a chance to read it? I was very impressed.
Very impressed.
I didn't realize we were so, I think Ms. G. keeps track of our every move.
Exciting.
It, it is. Actually, it is exciting. It's, it's, it impressed me. I didn't think we were doing that much, but...
Madam Chair, I did want to mention, mention it to Ms. G., you're even more productive than this document, which has a litany of good work. On June 21st of 2014, the commission sponsored the kickoff meeting for the West Broad Street Small Area Plan effort, which we are working on presently. And so in addition to approving the downtown small area plan, which was ultimately approved by city council, the kickoff for the next plan took place and we are working on that and hope to have a plan to you, in draft form, for you to discuss in more detail in the coming months.
Okay. Is that...
That would be added at, added in as the kickoff meeting for the small area plan for West Broad Street.
How could we have forgotten that? If I may, you two look at your upcoming agenda items. We have the second West Broad Street Small Area Plan scheduled for Saturday, the 7th of February. If it's, if we're snowed out or inclement weather, we have a backup date of Saturday, the 21st of February. Well, that's, oh, that's the CIP though. That's Sunday. On which day? The February the 8th. That's an open house on the CIP. I was talking about Saturday, the 7th of February. Yes, and, but you said if, if we're snowed out, it would be, I thought you said...
The 21st of...
Oh, the 21st. Okay. I didn't hear that. Okay, good.
So that, that is a large area. That's just as a reminder, the area between Little Falls Road and the W and O D Trail, all of West Broad Street. So it's an important lengthy portion of the city. It combines actually two small, two opportunity areas into one small area plan.
I just have, I'm sure it was inserted as a test to see if I read it, but on lines 279 and 316, my name is misspelled.
Oh, no. No, yeah.
Making it hard to search for my name to see if...
It was a test.
So I passed the test and I don't even care if you correct it, but there you go.
Which one? All right. If everyone has had, has had a chance to read this over and there are no more additions to the annual report, we will, yes? No more additions?
I wanted to make, make a point about the Planning Commission, particularly the chair's lengthy and dedicated involvement in the Mary Ellen Henderson, George Mason school planning process. This has been a major effort this year. There's been a lot of staff time on, on the part of our department involved. I know there've been many 7:30 Thursday meetings, also Mr. Meeks and others have been there. This has been a major effort. It isn't necessarily part of our work plan, but it is leading towards the planning of an important new area of the city. And there may be a way to capture that, that effort. Also, the Urban Land Institute, TAP, where there was a lot of effort and involvement by staff, but also commission members who attended and are aware of that, was a major effort as well. And in terms of regional cooperation, there was a major presentation by Fairfax County on the Seven Corners Plan, where they came to this commission, had a work session. So I'd like to, and then they later came along with Penny Gross, the supervisor for the district, to the city council. I think the commission's involvement in that, the staff's involvement in that, was one of the reasons we had had as much discussion about that plan as we have.
And I think we, I think they came to the Planning Commission first and we...
They did.
We expressed a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns, and, and got them, taking a look again at, at their plan and making changes to...
And that happened because the staff was very involved and, and persuaded them to come to us, set those meetings up. So the commission and the staff work on that, I think. Helped the planning, the planning for that area and helped the council be in a position to have its input at an early point on that plan before it got to the Board of Supervisors in, in Fairfax. And I think ultimately will have been, will have very positive effects for the city. So I think on the regional side, that would be, that's an important, important item.
Well, I think you're right. I think those things should be added.
And, and it is a very impressive list.
Do you have a deadline as to when these have to go before the city council?
I don't know that there's a deadline, but I just, it is a very impressive list. I want to thank Deborah D. for putting this all together. It's, there's a lot of good work here. I just, there's even more good work that's been done, so...
There's not a specific deadline. I could make the amendments that we've talked about tonight and you could look at it again at your next meeting if you'd like. I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
And then usually one of the planning commissioners will go to the council meeting and make the presentation of the report.
I think that's probably a really good idea because I think that that meeting with Seven Corners Task Force was a turning point in how they were viewing this versus how we were viewing it.
Well, the other things too. I mean, it's, it's not only the planning commissioners who, who work on these issues, but I think, I think the idea of getting all the staff time that goes into it, into the report is really important. So, you know, you can expand the hours if you'd like to.
But there is a, an awful lot of good stuff that happened last year and hopefully we're, we'll see more of that coming to fruition in the, in 2015.
I feel like I voted on some of these things you said. I could have sworn I voted on this stormwater thing.
I don't remember you being here at all, ever.
I remember voting on this stormwater thing. Did I vote on something else?
Maybe.
All right. I won't, all right. Let me. Well, I, I remember do, I mean...
Well, but, but we talked about these things over a period of several weeks and maybe you didn't, weren't there for the actual vote, but you were there for prior discussion?
I get that adrenaline rush when I push the thing. Like I remember voting more, I guess. Okay. It's all right. Let it go.
Maybe you voted by proxy.
You talk about it a lot, anyway.
Well, there's...
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to review this at the next meeting. The discussion of the capital improvements program, we went over some of that with Cindy and she's going to get us further information, but I'm going to pass out to you copies of the draft. This is very much a draft survey that they're intending to have the community review, the community input.
That's good.
So, okay, everybody's got one. Cindy would like to have any comments by Wednesday because she has a Thursday deadline to, to get it finalized. I think this is a, a big improvement on how we did it.
I think it's an absolute necessity. It's something we certainly learned with the Mount Daniel referendum and people just do not understand CIP process. Of course, sometimes, you know, it's difficult to understand, right?
Right.
But I think that there's so many questions that were brought up and that it's extremely important to know the process of thinking ahead and actually having things in a budget process that people do not understand. We're not telling our story.
Well, I think this is going to be very helpful to, to us and to the community as well. I mean, it can't help but give them some insight as to how this is put together. Any comments on the CIP? Russ?
Yeah, just looking at this, I'm just scanning it real quickly. There seems to be some explanations here about what we're talking about and I think one of the questions I get the most often, and I know what I struggled with when I first came on the Planning Commission, was the pay-as-you-go system. There's, the other categories are fairly self-explanatory, debt financed or from grants and things like that. But if there's a, if we're explaining things, I think how we're funding it should also be a really small, you know, another bullet point section that says, you know, how do we pay, how do we finance these things? And the pay-as-you-go, I think specifically needs to be explained.
Yeah. That was one of the things I brought up to Cindy when we were first talking about it. I said, "Nobody understands what pay-as-you-go means." It's, it's one of these insider comments.
Also about the process of matching grants. Because that gets really confusing, you know, where the money is and that we've got to match it in order to use it.
Rob?
Well, although it says the CIP is updated annually and is subject to change with each update, I think one of the confusions with Mount Daniel or other projects is because these things are in the CIP, people think they are already approved.
And they're out several years.
Which is, which is, my great challenge is always that we do these placeholder numbers as if we have agreed that that's the number. And I would prefer to not do a placeholder number if we have actual numbers or we're really moving forward, or whatever. And just to clarify that. And so she's got one sentence and that could be a little bit expanded.
I think, I think one of the things that has to be explained, and I don't know, it didn't seem to me, well, just that we have these parameters we have to be in, that we can only have so much debt and we can only have the CIP be so big. And that's why we end up with these placeholders, because if we didn't do that, we wouldn't be holding enough CIP for projects we know are coming. And so I don't like placeholders either, but I understand the use of them.
Well, but, but what is the use? So what are we, just a rhetorical question, obviously. So we have $100 million for a new high school. We can't put $100 million in the budget, so we're going to put a placeholder number of 36 million because that's, that's what the...
That's the most we can hold for you, right?
Okay. Doesn't that seem crazy to you?
It does seem crazy.
Doesn't that seem like a strange way to run a business?
It is a strange way to run a business, except that last year, with the library discussion, one of the reasons we knew we couldn't afford the 18 million is it wouldn't fit in the CIP with the upcoming costs we knew were, yeah, if we didn't have any placeholders in there for schools at all, we would be like, "Oh, we've got plenty of capacity."
Well, but, but for the library in particular, though, there were other concerns. There was a concern about actually tearing it down and rebuilding. There were other concerns. And so...
But the primary to me was we didn't really have the, the ability to do the amount that they needed.
Well, but recall, the other concern, the biggest concern that I had, is that we were spending all that money and getting no parking.
Yeah.
So, so let's spend...
Right. I was the one who said, "If we're going to do the 18 million, let's go to the 21 million and get the parking under there."
Yeah.
But, you know, and that's kind of what we heard today. Some people were like, "Let's go back to the big project."
And also, you know, I'd like to reflect back on what Russ said at the, that meeting, whichever one it was, about, at the joint city council, school board and planning commission about mentioning the fact that, you know, that there's a lot of things that should be being looked at, but there's just absolutely no space for them within the CIP.
Right. Right. Well, but there is no flexibility.
And it does, and you know, it tended to open up the last couple of years a little bit more, but certainly doesn't give us a wide open playbook for things. It's still very constrained and also that it is a constraint put on by council. That is their, that is their...
Was set, as a policy set by council.
Policy, so that, you know, and if that policy were to change a little bit, maybe there could be a little bit more shuffle room.
Well, maybe that's part of the language that can be in there, though, that policy's a good word, that there are policies that set the amount of debt the city can take on and the amount of projects that could be in the CIP. So that these are, these are, these are parameters that, that the CIP has to meet in, that's, I guess, what's a good word for it? Yeah. So there's not, because I think people also need to know the CIP is not unlimited. We can't just add whatever we want to.
Can't put a bucket of wishes in there.
Even if we had the money, we would actually, and even if we had the money somehow came to us, we would have to change those parameters to spend more money.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as you know, Melissa, surveys are delicate things.
Yeah, they're really delicate.
You're never quite sure what you're going to get out of them.
Well, and I, I was, because I was thinking about...
Even when you try to manipulate the language, so...
I thought like question two about the CIP funded and timed in, I'm not really sure if we're going to get anything really valuable out of that because ask, complete CIP project with a five-year time period with more cost upfront, or complete CIP over a 10-year, I mean, people are going to answer that based on, are there projects they really want done?
This is what my comment was. My comment was, if, if they really want sidewalks, they're going to pick one thing. If they really want the school, they're going to pick another thing.
Right. Exactly. It's just, I think that question is...
That's a possibility.
Right. On the number one, where it says transit, it says vehicle acquisition for more frequent services. Are we talking about buses or shuttles? On the transit one, the second from the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
I just think that that's a really awkward terminology there. I don't know what it means, really. I don't know what it means either. Okay. Well, because I was like, does that mean more buses, more shuttles?
I thought it meant shuttles.
That's what I thought too, but I think it needs to be more clear. I mean, is it golf carts? I mean, because there's something to be said for having electrically charged golf carts we could drive around.
Could I check one out? Just drive it around?
Just like, just like bike share, man.
Eco-friendly second vehicle.
Cart share.
Yeah, that is, I can understand the shelters and benches, but I don't understand the vehicle acquisition part. Okay. Any other suggestions? Because I'm going to be meeting with Cindy.
I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
The school ones, to me, seems almost too vague because there's, I mean, the difference between a renovation and what we're potentially proposing with George Mason, it doesn't seem to capture what we're talking about, to me. I mean, renovation is, you know, the five to even 15 million range. We're talking about something that's, has been a placeholder of around $100 million. And to say those are comparable by just one ranking, I, I don't have the solution. I just feel like that's just lumped in there like, hey, George Mason is in the same category as TJ and they're not that kind of project.
Could it say renovation, expansion and/or new schools construction? So it covers all three?
It's not that you can't make the description more clear. The, the issue is that that's one ranking. That's one. It's just schools.
Well, I think what they're trying to get from this is if people, if schools are the most important thing for the majority of people who answered the survey, or does that come, come down more in the middle and they're looking for other things? I don't know how they're, they're going to rank these.
Well, I think it's also going to count on who actually takes the survey.
Well, that's true.
And, and who can rally people to take the survey to pick them as number one.
Well, that, that, that's my question I have. I see we're capturing some demographic data here. I don't know what our intention is in terms of analyzing the data. To be honest with you, I don't even know how reliable Survey Monkey is as a tool that can't be manipulated. So I think it's fine to survey people. I think we should be careful about how much weight we put on the results unless we have some professional advice about the reliability and the source, you know? I mean, we capture some demographic data, but should we be capturing more if we're going to actually try to take the results?
Well, yeah, and there's something to be said for the fact that we're not asking for age or household income, which could make a big difference if people answered this.
Yeah, and I don't know if we want to, I'm just, you know.
I don't know either.
If we get the results back and it's like, hey, nobody cares about the schools, I'm going to be like, who filled this thing out? Because that's not what I hear when I walk around town. But I, I think it'd be an interesting experiment.
I think, that's what I was going to say.
Better than nothing.
I don't know if we'll get that much out of it, more than it's really going to be who rallies, who to really fill out as many of these as possible. That's going to rank near one. But what it does, there's another way of using surveys. Sometimes we use surveys in my company, not just to get some information, but we actually use it to educate. Because in the, going through the survey and answering the questions, it actually gets them to start thinking about the subject. So I think we can look at this, it is an education tool too. And that they're going to, if they're going to fill it out, they're going to have to try to understand the CIP more.
Well, you still have until Wednesday to, to get comments in, so.
Okay.
But I think all these comments are really good.
I, I think that cyclist facilities is misleading because certainly bicycle racks and bicycle routes, you know, to some extent, they, you know, you have to have the certain amount of money involved also. You know, that seems almost too simplistic in a way.
Well, just like Rob, if you were answering this survey and you're, I know you're a biker, you wouldn't put number one there in front of the schools, would you?
No.
So you just wonder what, you know, what demographic they're trying to get to here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'd like to move on to the other business, which we have none of, but we do have approval of the minutes for, well, this says the 5th of December, but our minutes say the 1st of December. So, I don't have my calendar in front of me. Was it the 1st or the 5th, Ms. G.?
I think it was the 1st.
The 1st, okay. All right. Has everyone looked over the minutes for the 1st of December? Any corrections or additions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I so move.
I'll second.
Moved and second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Mr. DeJean, you are abstaining since you weren't here.
Yes.
Okay. Planning Commission reports.
I do have a couple of things. First of all, at the EDA meeting tomorrow night, the, the plan that EDA has funded is going to be coming in for the pocket park or the small park and within the 100 block. So they're going to be presenting that tomorrow night. And so that, I think that was rather interesting. The other thing...
That's something that will come before the Planning Commission?
It would have to eventually.
Mr. Snyder, is that... Mr. Snyder, is that, even though EDA has, has paid for it, or is funding it, or whatever, is that something that would come before the planning commission for approval?
I would think it would have to be, and it, it won't be free. Also, the city staff had done some thinking about that area with regard to the downtown plan, which was approved by city council, and had some interesting ideas of some interim kinds of, what would you call it, Paul? Pop-up parks? We have some ideas for downtown that we put together, which we'd be happy to share with the commission at your leisure, maybe after, I don't know if we have time, but after the parks presentation.
I think it's gonna be very important to have some proper communication on this situation, because it's getting carp met, uh, carp.
I think, for those of you who went to the tree lighting, I mean, clearly, it's a space that could be, you know, very active. You know, what's there has been there a long time and is kind of tired. And so, you know, what we want that area to be like is, I think, it's a worthy question.
So, so they're, they're just funding the plan. They've, they've.
Funded design work, and we've had, we've had.
There's gonna be three options that are coming forth.
And we've had some initial input. We also, planning staff also did some brainstorming about some ideas we had for that area. It was, you know, just because we, we are thinking about those things. And be happy to, and some of that was, that was shared with their consultants. Some of it looked at trying to encourage some outdoor dining, other kinds of activity in the area between the buildings, because we have, you know, limited sidewalk space, and trying to create an attractive entry point into, into that part of the area.
This is the little park that's between the Dogwood Tavern and the.
Yes. There's an alleyway, and there's some planting areas, some large trees, a lot of mulch, some, the Unity Club is in behind it.
Right. But isn't that all parking? I mean.
There is some parking in the back, and there's some, some of it's green space, some of it's parking space, some of it's sidewalk space.
City-owned spaces.
City owns the property.
Right up to approximately, not all the way to park, but to a certain.
They own pieces going up toward park.
Okay. All right, it'll be interesting to see the plan.
It should, it should be really interesting as a starting point, but I think cooperation is gonna be key on that. We are, I just still wanna bring up that we are on the naughty list with the tree commission. And, and so, I know that there's been requests to staff and everything to make sure that anything that we're planning on doing, looking at the streetscape plans or anything like that, to have the tree commission involved with. And, and so.
Hey, Lyndy, do you know, are they, are they doing any research into ways to make grade-level tree pits viable? Because, because right now, they've basically said, we've been doing it this way for 25 years, we'd like to keep doing it this way.
Right now, all I'm getting are pictures of dead trees.
What's that?
Never mind.
I know, just, I, they're mad at us, that's fine. I've asked a simple question, which is, I don't know, they're the tree experts. Can they do some research into this?
I think the whole thing is, is that that is the plan. We shall not deviate from the plan.
One of the things I would mention is, as part of the West Broad Street Plan, we hope to take a look at some ongoing changes that have been made in practice to the Broad Street streetscape, and those range from, we now have a 20-foot setback instead of 14, 16 feet. We have a different bus shelter than the benches and the trashcans, which is the present standard. And so, and even on the Kensington, I think we recommended, staff recommended that you retain the edge bricking around the tree area, but move it just behind the curb line to get more, more space. If we go to upgraded lighting, for example, and go to LED lighting to replace the older, less efficient lighting, that would also be a change. So, there are ongoing things, which, just an update to how you build and maintain a streetscape, that I think are, are things that we can talk about as part of the small area plan, and we, we hope to, to have some effort to do a little bit of collaborative work between the planning commission and the tree commission to talk through some of the details of, of that West Broad Street, of the Broad Street streetscape.
Well, I would.
I think we can, we, we, we're very interested in trying to promote that discussion.
Let me, let me suggest an area where there may be a quicker and easier reproach mall. And that is the South Washington study, which seemed to go on and on forever, and has those beautiful fighting pits as a result.
You're talking about the North Washington Street?
North Washington, sorry. So, that's not what's on the plan. What ended up being there. That isn't the beautiful renderings that we got.
Right, right.
So my sort of question about this is, when we've sort of approved these plans, a lot of times, it, it isn't actually what gets built. Do you know what I'm saying? So I know that what we approved wasn't, like, I, I had my kid standing it the other day.
You couldn't find him?
He literally could use that as a fighting pit, because it comes up to about right here. I mean, like, if he had a rifle or something, he'd be perfect for this.
No, I pulled the plans out that we approved, the actual drawings, and went over and looked at it, and it doesn't look like anything.
It doesn't look anything like that.
And that, that was, I think, a major, and it was so expensive.
I think the question would be, are there some of these areas where we've sort of said this is gonna be the plan, but then it's gotten built, and we've said, well, wait a minute? That doesn't, that didn't really work like we did, because maybe there's a way we can go back and sort of revisit some of these.
Well, that's, that area is certainly one to talk about, and we'd like to do a debriefing of the people who, the Northgate project, who were, when the site plan and special exception were approved, were approved to build the Broad Street, Streetscape. They were persuaded to build the newly adopted plan. It, it, there were a lot of issues, it turned out, that are, we could talk about it in another meeting, but it's, it's worthy of a work session. Lessons learned, what the costs were, what the benefits. There were a lot of changes made as we got into that plan being approved, because the plan really didn't work very well in terms of, and so, there were a lot of, there's a lot of input from the Arborist, Shirley Street, and others about, about how it needed to be modified. So that's, that's a whole broader topic. But we would like to, at least on the West Broad Street project, bring up and identify some of the ongoing improvements and changes to the Broad Street plan.
Needs to be updated.
Well, and so that's my point. As we've gone through this, we've gotten, I think theoretically, more sophisticated in how we've kind of thought about some of these.
When I think, on the, on the North Washington Street, Streetscape, I think you need to evaluate whether or not the effort there, which was, I think, largely looking at trying to do water quality improvements by putting water through these catchment areas, if you will, that would have some landscaping on them, whether that is really, whether that's worked or not. And.
Yeah, but so.
It's not just the appearance, it's.
Yeah, but it is the appearance, because what we voted for, I, I appreciate the water quality, and I appreciate that, that, but what we voted for is not, doesn't look like what got built.
No.
Well, we can have it in more detail. We have a work session on that. There's a lot, you know, there were lots of blocks on that, and personally, I'm not pleased with what's been done out there. I think there are better ways to spend the money to, and I, I'm not a fan of what's out there, but that's a personal opinion. They're very expensive, and I, you know, I think we'd be better off with trees and good sidewalks.
Well, I, the tree commission is just very worried about the Broad Street plan, and it is an older plan, and there's been a lot of new things that have come along that need to be really looked at. They are also very upset because of the proposed group home, where they, it might have been a pocket park. So there's, there's some disconnect all the way along, and some, but I just wanted to report that. But also, then I went on with Lauren Bruce to Dunbar High School and got some information that is an amazing school. There's things that I really loved about it, other things I didn't, but the first thing is, it is indestructible. The materials they put in were the best quality, terrazzo, tile, you know, they even had, and I was the only one that wanted to go look at a bathroom, but those are very important in a high school. And tile, floor to ceiling, and then some sort of material for the stalls that you couldn't do any graffiti on. But I think that, that they've not had a single bit of graffiti done, so I do hope that that, you know, proves out for their good fortune. But the geothermal stormwater collected is used for flushing. Huge amount of environmental situations, and I've got some materials, be happy to pass them on down, and happy to have, borrow them if you want them. Just some really great stuff going on down there. But, you know, things that are very important to that neighborhood. For instance, they do have a community clinic there. We said, ooh, that looks a little bit big for a high school clinic, but they partnered with Howard University for dental and medical. And so parts of it are totally able to be left open to the public, and then the instructional areas can be easily closed off and everything. It was very, very, very well planned, but if anybody wants, we've got some stuff.
Thank you.
Pretty amazing.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm Melissa.
No, I just want to mention, I am gonna go to the January ninth meeting on Friday, the Monday, the morning meeting on the downtown. Mostly because I, I already have, I own property down there as well, anyway, so I got an invitation as, as owner, so I thought.
Two hats.
I have two hats, so if, if no one else can go, because it is a workday, I will definitely be there to represent the planning commission.
I think they were hoping that we all weren't gonna go.
I know.
I was expecting Lyndy to do it. Tenor Hill is this Friday.
Oh.
That Tenor Hill thing.
Gee, I'm sorry.
It's all sold out.
What Tenor Hill thing?
But.
Sold out. The gala.
Gala.
And then the other thing is dedication.
Thank you for saving me.
Uh, is Saturday.
They're gonna have the ribbon cutting over at the park area, over at the, but, yeah, the, the gala itself is all sold out, so it's gonna be very, very, you know, good. They could have used a bigger venue. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on then to planning director's report. Mr. Snyder, please.
Yes. Couple of things were mentioned, I'd just like to repeat. There is the dedication for the Tenor Hill Historic Site. I know the commission has been involved in that. I believe there was a good bit of work done. We did some administrative approvals for the park area. It's, the construction's almost complete, and that is this Saturday at, on the 10th at 1:00 P.M. We did have a, we do have tablets now that we've gotten from IT that we are, they're made by HP, that we're trying to learn how to use. We got those on Wednesday, the 31st. There was a, a temporary certificate of occupancy issued for Jesse Thackeray School on Wednesday. They have moved their furniture in, and it's presently, they're, it's ongoing. Tennis court's been fenced off, and that work will continue, but the, the building is complete, and the kids are in there, parking lot's functioning and striped, and.
And that's preschool only?
I believe so, and if you've been by, it's kind of a cheerful bright yellow with green roof. From the building inspection side of things, it's a greatly improved building in terms of safety. A lot of effort went into keeping it on track, working with schools to get all the inspections lined up. It was not an easy project, but I think when that entire project is complete, including the tennis court improvements, we'll have a very nice piece of city property. As you may recall, the, all of the undergrounding of water storage is under the parking lot. So it will not, if there is ever subsidence or other kinds of problems, it'll be easily repaired or accessed, rather than being under the tennis courts. So I know there was a lot of concern about that, there were meetings, and planning commission had a couple of, didn't we have a 2232 hearing on that, if I recall? Probably add that to our list, but a lot of work done by this group, and then schools on the neighborhood side, so a, a good result, a good result there.
And I heard, just because people ask, that the tennis courts can't be resurfaced till spring when it warms up, I think, someone.
Yes, I believe that's correct. They're doing the, the drainage is being put around. My understanding is, this is anecdotal, but people in the neighborhood that drainage problems with the big rains we had of, those problems have disappeared.
Agreed.
So hopefully, that's the case, and I think the, the tennis courts from what I hear will be able to be resurfaced without having to be rebuilt. So that'll also be a good result, and if you get a chance, go by and, and take a look. We did, we have a, a new staff person, Inyoung Kwan, who had worked with us at the counter before, and she is helping us on the building safety side and on the, helping us with plan, handling plans and, and working with Kurt Derschelmaker. We've inventoried all of our plans and went through all of our plans that now can be boxed up and sent off to Iron Mountain. Trying to make room for the activity that's taking place. I think she's gonna be invaluable to us. Her funding source is coming through our technology fee. So we're, we're working on trying to be more efficient in the office and see how we can touch plans fewer times, be more efficient with how they flow through the process. As the new buildings go up, and we go from the concrete parking garages to the higher, the taller residential apartments and commercial uses, there's going to be a big demand in terms of inspections and plan review. That's a lot more intense than the parking garage, so we're probably gonna need an additional building safety inspector, plan reviewer, to help keep things moving, so I'm just letting you know that. We have been trying to make new space for, out of space we've got, so if you're Jerry McDonald transformed an area that we had, had into a, a work area and a planned storage area, so if you're in the neighborhood, we can show you where that's going. We also are working on trying to get another transportation person, working with, with human, human services to assist Paul Stoddard in his work on transportation and comprehensive planning, so we hope to have somebody on board this spring. This is, that's one of the areas that the city council had identified as, as the manager needing to address, and so we're working diligently to try to bring somebody on board to assist with that. Was a busy year. It proved, it's gonna prove to be, I think, another busy year ahead. There's a lot of activities, you know, that's gonna be coming forward on the Broad and West Project, and there are other projects that we're talking to various people about, so if the economy holds, and just the projects that are going to be underway are gonna be challenging, so we're looking ahead at a busy year. We do hope to get progress made on the small area plan for Broad, for the West Broad Street, and hopefully bring that to closure before the end of fiscal year, and then try to launch the next project again in the summertime, so we can keep on track with that. Some of you, I think, were able to go to the grand opening of the Good Fortune supermarket.
Oh, yeah.
And that's quite a busy and big, brand-new place. I think they did a very nice job on the exterior of the building, the way it's integrated into the rest of the shopping center. The parking lot, which I know this group spent a lot of time on, looking at circulation, seems to be laid out very well, functioning well. They're doing a very good job of keeping all the carts up near the store, so I've visited it a number of times, and it, it flows and works very well. So hopefully, they'll do well and, and bring a lot of revenue to the city. Certainly seem to be a lot of very interested customers who are enjoying the store.
Yeah, the prices are great.
And let's, let's hope they don't come back to us looking for more parking. They have plenty of parking now.
Parking looks like it's working fine, and I do think of a lot of the effort, and I'm looking at Worcester Wadiska and others, trying to make sure that the design of that layout was properly done, has paid off, it, it functions well. Very good circulation up there, so. So those are some, some big events. We, we are gonna be also investigating a possible mini-tap to look at. We, we are going to be also investigating a possible mini-tap to look at the city property yard. So we'll keep you more informed as we look into that a little more, looking at how that can best be used. It's an important piece of property, so. Any, any questions for me?
I had a very quick question, which I just mean to keep simple. So when we did the downtown small area plan, it didn't necessarily take in the parking that would be adjacent, theoretically adjacent to the library, but-
It identified it as a possible parking garage location.
Well, okay.
I'm sorry. It, it's outside the area plan.
It's outside the area plan, but it identified it.
Yeah.
Do, is it, is it simple to sort of do some sort of cost-benefit analysis from that small area plan and from that location as to the valuable, how valuable the extra level of deck may be?
And let me back up a second. It is, as someone mentioned, it is in the West Broad Street area. We, we did a, we did a look at possible parking garage locations, aside from the small area plan, that is one that we looked at. Garrison Kit did various schemes, and it is a well-located site. I would guess that in our small area plan for West Broad Street, that we will be showing that as a possible parking garage location.
Well-
And so if you're looking at efficiencies, certainly it's a lot more efficient to go up multiple levels than to build one level or two levels, because, you know, it's the, it's the mobilization, what we heard tonight, it's the foundations. I would certainly recommend any garage you build, be built to have other levels in the future. I think it's a very good investment.
Well, it's, it's a tricky location, though, and, and the reason I asked it in the context of the, of the downtown small area plan, is it seems to me that certainly if you're going to the farmer's market, you would park there. Certainly if you're going to the library, you would park there, or Starbucks, but if you're going to, you know, the Dogwood or the State Theater, I don't, I don't think so. And, and so I'm curious, when you look at, the, the question really is about the process. When you look at these areas, do you, are you sort of saying, well, you know, if you have a dollar, you would love to have a parking garage here as opposed to there? Based on the existing density?
I guess what I would say, and I, I think when you're west of Little Falls, you're getting more into the question of what kind of parking do we need for the City Hall, Public Park campus? In other words, if we think of the City Hall and the community center and Cherry Hill Park and the library, along with Park Avenue, which the city owns, as the municipal campus, then you would, if there's an ability to build a garage in that area, it's one that serves that campus, just as in present day, when the farmer's market's going full-tilt, many, many people are parking in that garage, in that lot presently, just by arrangement and agreement by generosity, people who own the property. So I think it's more of a City Hall, Cherry Hill, a library kind of location. Certainly there could be some commercial benefit as well, possibly the shopping areas nearby, the medical offices. But I, I think it's more strategically located for City Hall, the medical buildings and the shopping center than is for downtown, quote-unquote, if you see downtown as being east of Little Falls.
Correct.
Yeah. But it's a good site and-
But that's only two blocks from Little Falls.
One thing that was not figured, was not talked about at the work session was, you know, if you're not paying for land, guess what? Land's expensive.
Right.
We sold, we sold land-
Paying for air rights.
-to Harris Teeter for $4 million. So when you start figuring in, if you're able to get property and do parking without having to pay for land by, by mutual arrangement or agreement or public-private partnership, there is some value to that, that, you know, aside from how much is the physical, you know, concrete and foundation's going to cost. The land costs, one, if you can find it, two, if it's got the right shape, and three, what's it going to cost you? If it's not expensive, it could be a bargain.
Right. Well, and we don't have access to the 55 spaces now, which-
Correct, we don't.
-council was missing. They, they were, they were, good, thank you.
It's also kind of building a parking garage in reverse, because if you're building an underground garage, the most expensive levels, the lowest level underground, the foundation, the digging, the de-watering and all of that. To build a flat garage, and you have to take away that hillside, you're basically building that lower level first, then another level. The least expensive levels are going to be the ones that are coming up-
Right, right.
-further. So I certainly would advocate spending the money to go taller if you needed to in the future, or even putting a rooftop space on top of a garage, where you might have under roof, a large-formatted area someday that could be used for a variety of purposes, meeting rooms and other things like that, which would protect the garage over time from deterioration from water, salt, water infiltration, deterioration of concrete and reinforcing bars.
I have a question regarding the Harris Teeter and the Tinner Hill project. Do you, do you have any progress report on those?
They are making, they are making good progress. I think the, the commercial level is coming out of the ground now at Harris Teeter, and I would think by the end of February, that should be topped out in terms of the concrete platform. I think Tinner Hill's also making good progress, and I'm trying to remember, I think they were saying they thought by the end of March, they might have the, the concrete platforms built and then be able to start going vertical above that. But it's remarkable to watch the work that's been going on, and we've been fortunate to have relatively mild weather. They are making a lot of good progress.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we also have an update on the Howard Herman Park and also the West End Park?
I drove by the way.
They really have started doing-
I was on the road, I was so excited.
I know, they really have done a lot of work and just the progress report on it.
I think it's Mike Whitworth, is that our, Mike Wit, Wit, Whitfield?
Yeah.
Mike Whitfield, who's one of our construction supervisors. He's been working with parks, and I think he reported this morning that, you know, they are making good progress there. There has, there have been some weather delays, but it's, it's moving ahead. And so some of those projects are moving ahead. We can try to get an update for you at your next meeting, or I don't know if Paul has more information, but it's good to see the work going on.
The West End, really, it's exciting, of course, we can't see as much as you can on the Howard Herman.
The Howard E. Herman is a mud pit.
It's a mud pit.
Colossal, messy pit of mud that's sucking in equipment. It's so muddy, it's a mess. But that doesn't mean it won't turn out nice, it's just-
We're going to lose, we're going to lose big equipment.
-in the very uncomfortable viewing stage at this point.
And also, I would be greatly remiss if we did not somehow reach out and thank the city arborists for, and Mike Collins and everybody for getting the lights up in the downtown area. That was, you know, that was-
How long are they going to be up?
I think until March, from what I know.
I believe that's what I heard, yeah.
Because that's when the trees start leafing out, but, you know, that was done in such a short planning area, uh, time, and it was, you know, it was a great start to it all, and it was really fun down there the night that they returned them on and everything. It was almost giddy, you know, just the fact that, oh, and, you know, I know there've been complaints and everything, but, you know, it's a great start.
Mostly I've heard good things, but-
It's a great start, and frankly, watch night, all kinds of really great comments coming from people who don't live here.
And that's another example of changing approaches and something that wasn't able to be done.
We forgot to mention watch night, too.
Wasn't able to be done in the past, but with new thinking, has been able to be done, lighting the trees. So that's an example of flexibility, so.
And also all the work for watch night. We should always be thanking people all over the place.
Well, that's not, that's not, doesn't come under our purview, so I think-
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I would like to accept that motion because-
Absolutely.
-we have Paul waiting for us with his wonderful report. Hold on some paper, please say aye.
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 I don't know, I don't usually adjourn.
I don't think you got a second.
For the record, I will second it.
I'll postsecond it.
You actually don't.
Oh, you don't? Is that weird, journey?
But we're going to do that.
And, so we're going to have the work session next?
Can we stay up here, or do we?
Yeah, stay.
Yeah.
If you would, stay up there for the presentation, and then after the presentation, we'll break and come down to the table.
And I would, I would like to just mention, Paul's been, Paul's done a great job of moving the new chapter forward. This is again based on the same design that we came up with and have used now for mobility for all modes. Again, this will be a chapter, what's adopted, it'll live on the web, will be more interactive, a lot more friendly and useful than present plan while retaining much of the good work that's in the present plan document, so. Want to thank Paul for all his good work on this.
So thank you, Chair Rogers, members of the planning commission, for having the time to do this work session tonight. I want to run through this presentation, and then we'll break out of this format, and we'll go into more of, more of a sort of discussion, roundtable-type discussion.
And this is, this will be filmed, so this can be seen?
Yes, so this presentation is being filmed and broadcasted so that people, no matter where they jump in in the planning process, they can-
Have to speak to, in our microphones, if we ask you a question.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, please. So just to, to lead into this presentation and sort of put us in the right frame of mind for the conversation later, if you look at the bottom of the staff report, you'll see sort of the timing section. We're coming into sort of the close of this planning process for this project. So here we are, January 5th, planning commission work session, and then from here, we're trying to get out to a last visit to the Wreckin' Parks Board this Wednesday, and then asking you all to participate in a joint work session with council on January 20, and assuming all the groups are in support of the, the plan in its sort of current form, then we come back to you all on February 2nd as an action item to get your approval on this chapter, and then February 9 would be the final action by city council. So we really are trying to hit the glide path for adoption here. So with that, I'll jump into the presentation. So I always start off with this slide about why are parks important. Parks speak to a number of different interests that people might have in the city. So there are social and health benefits to parks, there are environmental benefits to parks, there are economic benefits to parks. So whether it's social interaction and exercise you're looking for, if you're interested in air quality, water quality, water quantity, wildlife habitat, tree canopy, business attraction, labor attraction, or just making it an overall nicer place to live, there's something in the park system that's for you. So what are we going to talk about in this presentation? I've already motivated parks with the previous slide. I will throw in a slide about what the comprehensive plan is, so we have a sense of what we're trying to accomplish with this chapter. We'll go over the planning process, the steps we took to get to this point, then an overview of what's in the draft chapter. So what does the future park system look like, and what are the implementation priorities for getting to that future park system? So the comprehensive plan, I think you all will know this, but this is included in the presentation for anyone who's watching at home. The comprehensive plan is a policy guide for development of the city, so it speaks to different elements of development, whether they're land use, natural resources, transportation, affordable housing, all those things are in here. And so as a policy guide, it's used in the budgeting process, it's used to identify projects, and also to prioritize those projects. And so then each individual chapter within that comprehensive plan speaks to a specific element. In this case, we're talking about parks, open space and recreation, and so there's a vision and goals for what those ought to look like. And then there's an analysis of what do we have in the existing system today, what's missing, what are the opportunities to fill in the gaps, and then what's our priority, what are our priorities for getting that done? So the planning process, we've been going at this for about eight months now. We kicked this off in June of last year, 2014, and that was with work sessions with the city council, with the planning commission, with the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board. Then we went into the brainstorming process. We went out to every board and commission. We went out to multiple civic groups. We went out to the community to gather up all the ideas that people were interested in, in the park system and what the park system meant to them. And then we tried to prioritize all those ideas, and that's what we're doing, we're closing out now. We went out and did a web survey. We had over 400 responses to the web survey this time. We talked to the planning commission, we talked to the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board, we talked to city, we're going to talk to city council. We also had some staff analysis of sort of what we heard, because you want to know what people want, and then what actions you need to do first in order to get to your long-term goals. And so you'll see that in the prioritization, which is included in the attachments. So what do we want in, so what does the plan call for in, in this future park system? The idea is to get the park system from, to move it from a set of sort of isolated pieces to a connected system, where each of the parks play a different role, and they're a different component within the city's larger park system. And so that draft vision statement then, which I always read this out because it's a quote, "Build upon existing parks within the city to develop a well-maintained and safe park, open space and recreation system that provides a range of amenities while enhancing natural ecosystems and contributing to a sense of place." So this draft vision statement came about from all of that engagement with the boards and commissions, that each board and commission, and each member of the public, and each response to the survey fed a little different piece into this vision statement. So the elements shifted around, the language changed, added, was removed, added, and this is what we've gotten to at this point. And so within that vision statement, there are various goals. The most important one on everyone's list seemed to be maintaining the existing parks. And then following from that, there's acquisition of land, enhancement of existing programs, increasing natural areas, providing, taking more advantage of green infrastructure, and then ensuring safety through lighting, visibility, patrolling, so some of that's safety through design, and some of that's safety through actual activity. And so then this park system has a whole bunch of different kinds of parks within it. So you've got parks for recreation, traditional playing fields, parks for placemaking, these can be plazas and streetscape, parks for infrastructure, this could be transportation waste, this could be stormwater retention, and then all of these recreational facilities that are part of this sixth system, whether it's a new swimming facility, indoor fields, or outdoor amenities like dog parks, frisbee golf, so a range of amenities for a range of different people and interests. And so with all of that as input, we take the existing park system that we have today, and then turn that into a park system of the future, which you can see, I'll flip back and forth here, existing parks we have, and then what we're really doing is filling in the gaps, making those connections, adding the amenities, providing the access. So it's, it's providing access to the existing parks, it's making connections among the existing parks, and then providing amenities within them. And so then the policy actions that the city would need to take in order to realize that future park system, some of them have to do with funding, whether it's finding new means for funding, or finding out how are we going to stably fund these things over time, follow-up planning efforts, what do we want the standards for the parks to be, what do we want, what are the priority acquisitions that we need to make in terms of land, and then partnerships. So the city is not going to be able to pay for all of these things out of city tax, so it needs to find other ways to get these things done. Some of it is getting more volunteer support, building on the Adopt a Spot program to develop them into true Friends of the Parks groups, and then working on MOUs, whether it's with the city schools, or with Fairfax County, or with Arlington County, to try and partner and share costs. Draft projects, some of these things are features within existing parks, and some of these are new facilities that need to be constructed. So examples of features are things like enhancements to the W&amp;O D Trail, whether those are plazas or better crossings, installing disc golf courses, dog parks, or facilities, whether that's new indoor fields, the new swimming facility. There's a mix of things. And so as I mentioned, the city is not going to be able to afford all of these things out of just raising the tax rate, even if it wanted to, which I don't think it does, and so we're going to have to look for ways to increase the number of tools we're using. What are more strategies we can use? So that's partnerships, looking for mutual gains, identifying grant sources, and then part of this is going to be making the case for different park priorities. And when I talk about partnerships, there are lots of other groups that are interested in different things the park system's trying to achieve, whether it's field space, plazas, open space, indoor facilities, greenways and parkways. There are different groups that are trying to achieve the same end, so these are the groups to go after and see if they're interested in sharing. And so with that, I'll actually close out the presentation, so we can break away to the sort of discussion, unless there are any questions we want to answer sort of in this format. All right, thank you.